Betty Sattler, who passed away on October 13th. And Betty served as a nurse in the Southington Public Schools from 2002 until her retirement in 2015. I'd also like to include in our moment of silence, Richard Santinella, who passed away suddenly on Friday, October 22nd. Rich began teaching music and leading the band at DePaulo Middle School in August, in August of 2012. This was a devastating loss for the DePaulo community and our entire Southington Public School family. Rich was an admired and respected colleague and a favorite amongst many students. His legacy will be the lasting contributions he made to many young and aspiring musicians, fostering their love for the arts. So please a moment for both of them. Thank you. Thank you. Continuing. Next on our agenda, our communications from our wonderful student representatives.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
I first wanted to start off with one of our ceremonies that we held last week in the atrium. At 2:30, we newly inducted our National Honor Society members. We had a high turnout of current members as well as parents, and we also had an appearance by Mr. Medancy and Mr. Craco. There was also refreshments available at the end. I also wanted to mention some of the things or accomplishments from the other school systems. For example, South End would like to congratulate the September Charter Champions from each class. Students were selected as Charter Champions for their classroom character each day at school to promote emotional intelligence, as well as Darren Haskett at Montreal School. Lewis Farms donated pumpkins for third graders to decorate at home, and students are encouraged to send pictures back to school to share.
Good evening, everyone. Onto sports. The SHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team completed the regular season Monday with a straight-set win over Northwest Catholic. The team compiled of a record of 14 wins and four losses. The team advan-- and the team advances to the CCC Championship Tournament on Monday in the round, in the round of 16, at home against East Hartford at 6:00 PM. The team has qualified for the CIAC Class L Tournament as well. The SHS Football and Cheerleading Teams recognize their seniors tomorrow night with a Friday Night Football at Fontana Field, as the Blue Knights host East Hartford at 7:00 PM. Senior Knights festivities start at 5:45 PM. The girls' swimming, swimming and diving celebrated its senior night as well Wednesday afternoon, defeating Berlin 85 to 77. The Blue Knights finished the season with a record of 6 to 3. CCC Championship diving and swimming meets take place next Monday and Tuesday respectively. The SHS Field Hockey Team defeated Newington 2 to 1 in its senior night game last week. The team has a record of 6, 6, 6 to 6 to 1, has qualified, has qualified for the CIAC Class L Tournament. The team hosts Glastonbury tomorrow at 3:45 PM before the football game on the turf field. The Blue Knights Girls Soccer Team defeated Lewis Mills last evening 2 to 0 in its senior night game, improving its record to 7 to 1 to 6, with two regular season games remaining, including a big match against Glastonbury this Saturday at 12:00 PM. The Bullery Soccer Team needs, needs to win its last two regular season games tomorrow at Enfield, and then senior night against Northwest Catholic next Tuesday night to qualify for the CIAC Class Double Out Tournament. The SHS Boys Cross Country Team finished its fourth, in fourth place in the CCC Championship meet last week. Southington Athletics appreciates the community's ongoing support as we head into November postseason regional and state camp, state competitions. Parent-teacher conferences are also back in person this year on November 17th, and if parents do not feel comfortable meeting in person, virtual meetings are available. And it is a stressful week for the high school students due to the fourth, first quarter of the school year ending on Monday, November 8th. Many is, many feel as though this quarter has flown by, and the excitement for the holiday breaks is steadily increasing.
Hello, everyone. The high school orchestra and concert band performed for the first time since 2019 this past Tuesday. The performers were overwhelmingly excited to be back. As someone in orchestra, I can say there was a connection in our groups that was like no other. A big thank you to Mrs. O'Seas, who is incredibly strong and hardworking teacher, along with Mr. Stepler, who has such a passion for music for putting on such a wonderful event. And lastly, last week, the high school went through with their first capstone day. There were some difficulty due to traffic on the example Google site, leading to some frustration, but most students were able to at least somewhat complete their first lesson.
Thank you. So we're going to have our first semester ending for all three of you. I would imagine you're all going to get As in all of your classes. Is that correct?
No stress.
Yes.
With luck.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Any questions from any board members of our students? All right, kids, thank you so much.
So madam chair, if I may, to our board members, thank you for that report, and, and I do know this is, having a senior myself in high school, crunch time for them this week, finishing up on college essays and trying to do their schoolwork. So if any of you feel the need tonight, tonight to step out at some point in the meeting to get home and catch up on your studies and keep going with their work, Monday, November 1st is the early action deadline for a lot of these kids, and so they're up at here Thursday night at the 11th hour, but I know they're up against that deadline as well. So please feel free to excuse yourself if and when you need to.
I already told them that, Steve. But thank you. See, one step ahead of you. Thank you.
I'm just gonna move down to the other end with the timer.
Okay, okay. Next on our agenda is communications from the public. And once again, I will remind you to please know that you have three minutes to speak, and if you would please sign the paper with your name and address, we'd appreciate it. And Mrs. Clark will keep the time. Anyone from the audience who has something to say?
Good evening. My name is Megan Keough. I live on Hartaker Road in Southington. I am the parent of a student at John F. Kennedy, as well as the high school. I am here tonight to express my concern of assault, and more specifically, safety in our schools. I hope to engage in a conversation that will provide the safety that is needed throughout the schools in these times. To my understanding, there have not only been verbal assaults through the high school and junior highs, but also physical assaults that started at the high school in just the first few days of the school year. There was also an off-campus assault between students that endangered the community, after which all parents received an email. In regards to the junior high, we as parents and guardians were contacted via email as well to discuss with our children the issue of potential violence against teachers due to a TikTok trend. These behaviors clearly endangered both staff and student, and the council led by the superintendent's solution was to follow protocol. The protocol on the high school level was to bring in additional counselors and police. I question the board to review how many students access these counselors. How does a child know how to recognize the effects of trauma only days after it happens? Or should that resource be more effective for the staff, who as adults might know how to recognize the anxiety related to being threatened? The counseling resources for children could look different if held in an assembly or as an open forum. I also asked to review how your addition of police would promote security versus fear. The last meeting you as adults were, quote, "bothered by police standing outside of these doors." Imagine how young adults feel when attempting to learn. I am asking for the committee to consider a third-party analysis or survey of the school community to see how we can better them. The critical theory that should be in place is to look at what has historically happened to other districts and move our schools forward, providing safety and prevention of any potential destruction, both mentally and physically of our students and staff. I feel those involved in the school budgets should find a way to help in the protection of staff and students with a form of metal detection at the entrances. These are a few examples of why I feel we could no longer assume it won't happen to us and implement stronger security measures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Steve Alsheski, 191 Queen Street. I was encouraged by Mr. O'Shaughnessy's comments at the last board meeting. At the meeting, he listed six specific doctrines of critical race theory and said that they have no place in our schools. And if anyone would like to see Mr. O'Shaughnessy's comments, the last meeting is on the town's official YouTube channel. His comments on this issue start at 1:44 and 5 seconds and end at 1:45 and 2 seconds. And also at the curriculum meeting, Mr. Brown affirmed that he also shares Mr. O'Shaughnessy's views, that those items do not belong in the classroom, and I believe, I'm going by memory, so correct me if I'm wrong, that Mrs. Carmody also said that those items don't belong. Let's put aside the words "critical race theory" and focus in on those specific items that Mr. O'Shaughnessy mentioned. Those six he mentioned, that America is irredeemably racist, that all white people are racist, that white people are oppressors, that non-white people are victims, that capitalism is racist, and lastly, that the only solution to past discrimination is present discrimination. Those six things you all say you agree do not belong in our schools. So the right thing to do now is to ban those six items and to institute a zero tolerance policy for any rogue teachers pushing this ignorant hatred on students. As of right now, the board's track record on this issue is not a good one. You've spent months denying, 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 instead of addressing our concerns in a serious manner. Even after saying you all agree on this, you have not taken any action. All you have done is talk, no doing. If you all agree on those, that those six items should not be in our schools, banning them as a matter of policy should be easy and unanimous. The lack of action raises the suspicion that you don't actually agree, and are only claiming to agree to get re-elected. If the election were today, based on the lack of action, the board would get an F. But the election is not today, the election is next week. You still have today, right now, to show the people of this town that you are not just talkers, that you are not just deniers, that there is no cause to be suspicious of your authenticity, that you, we can actually count on you to stop these repulsive ideologies from infiltrating our school system, is entirely in your hands right here, right now. If no action comes, you signal to us next Tuesday that you are not serious. If you take action right now, you signal to us next Tuesday that you are on our side. We are waiting and watching. Next Tuesday, we stop waiting. This is your choice and your moment. I hope you will do the right thing, take action right now at this meeting, and prove to all of us that you're reliable. Thank you.
Good evening. Scream from 27 Hitching Post Drive, AKA Michael Krasinski. So first of all, I'm here, and this is most likely the last time you will ever see me wearing a mask again. Second of all, I'm dressed up as a monster, as this is what the state Democratic Party, the federal government, Joe Biden, and the FBI think parents are, who show up to speak at Board of Ed meetings, on behalf of their children, as evidenced by the cartoon in your position, in your possession, Exhibit A. Third of all, and most importantly, I'm here to illustrate the rotten position the mask mandate puts students, parents, teachers, and administrators in, as evidenced by the email exchange between a DePaulo teacher and a parent, myself. The teacher emailed, "Good morning. I'm reaching out to let you know that Daria has been struggling to keep her mask over her nose throughout the school day." Each day, the Green Team teachers have to give Daria multiple reminders about wearing her mask correctly, both in the classroom and when she is passing in the hallways. Daria does not seem to be taking these reminders seriously as the mask continues to be pulled down. As you know, the governor has mandated that masks be worn at all times in school buildings. While I know that wearing a mask all day can be challenging, it is a rule we have to enforce here at DePaulo. We do have mask breaks built in throughout the day, and if needed, we allow students to take a quick mask break in the hallway during a class period. Could you please reinforce with Daria that she needs to keep her mask over her nose at all times while in the building, unless, of course, it's during a mask break? School policy states that if the issue continues after contacting a parent, the child will be sent to administration. I'm hoping to avoid this course of action by reaching out to you and asking for your help. Thank you in advance for your help." And it's from a certain DePaulo teacher. And sorry, it's hard for me to speak in this mask, so you can imagine what students go through. My response, "I feel bad for you and other teachers and administrators to have the burden now, not only of your regular duties," sorry, "but also police and the proper wearing of masks by students at DePaulo. This is an unfortunate situation, as my wife and I strongly disagree with the governor's decision to mandate the wearing of masks in schools. In doing my research, I don't see almost any benefits to mask-wearing in schools, and I see a lot of downsides." I won't go into that in detail here, as this is a debate. Would someone be able to give me three more minutes?
I'm at the Gap, 28 Working Street.
Thank you. As this is a debate that is going on throughout the country. In fact, I have been at the forefront of a movement to repeal the mask mandates in schools. Many other parents feel the same way as I do, and we've been making our voices heard about our disapproval of the mask mandate at town Board of Ed meetings. I also believe the pushing of the mask-wearing is being done in part for political reasons, and that does not sit right with me. I am not sure if you're enforcing the mask-wearing rules in school because you are a firm believer in the efficacy, efficacy of masks, or simply because your job requires you to police mask-wearing or a little of both. I understand that many teachers are more lenient about the wearing of masks in their classrooms, and I was hoping that all of Daria's teachers would lean in that direction. In any event, this current situation puts us at a logjam. I find mask-wearing unbearable for myself, and I'm lucky that in my job, I very rarely have to wear a mask for any extended period of time. If I had to do this, I don't think I could bear it. I realize everyone tolerates the wearing of a mask differently and has a different threshold for when it becomes unbearable. In the case of my daughter, Daria, she has little tolerance for mask-wearing. We do not require her to wear a mask anywhere else she goes. I do have an issue, I do not have an issue with anyone who wants to wear a mask, as that is their choice. If other students or staff are concerned for their safety, I recommend that they double or even triple mask. Daria has three older brothers and one older sister, all of whom attended public schools. Three have graduated high school, and one is a senior. None of my children have ever gotten into any sort of trouble in school, and we always have taught our children to respect school authority and follow school rules. However, in this case, I'm making a specific exception for my daughter in terms of following rules slash authority related to mask-wearing in school. If I was in Daria's shoes now and attending DePaulo, I would not be following these mask rules. So I can't expect her to follow rules that I wouldn't, as that would be hypocritical on my part. I will tell Daria to do what she feels works for her in school related to her tolerance for mask-wearing. I hope this issue doesn't escalate to school administration. I'm not looking for any type of confrontation. However, if the issue does escalate, I will have to take the side of my daughter on this issue. On almost any other issue that would come up related to my daughter, you would have my backing. I have a lot of respect for teachers, as I understand their importance to our society and the difficulty of their jobs. Thank you for reaching out to me about Daria. I think this email exchange sums up the predicament we're all stuck in. Let's solve it by removing or not enforcing the mask mandate. Thank you for your time, Board.
Hi, good evening. My name is Angelica Spada, and I'm residing at 550 Darling Street here in Southington. And I am the Libertarian candidate for Board of Ed here in town. I'd like to first and foremost thank the current board members who have served these past couple of years. I'm new to Southington, and I know that you guys were kind of, you know, thrown for a loop when you guys got hit with COVID. So thank you for your service here and for what you have done in service over the years for the kids and the children in this community. Thank you. I'd like to publicly address reasons why I decided to run for a seat here on the Board of Ed. As a first-time mother of my 18-month-old daughter, and as a first-time politician, I want to be understood that I believe my purpose is in service to others. I'm not in this for any selfish or self-seeking political gain. I run because I saw a need to better serve the community that I decided to raise my daughter in. She is an individual like everyone else in this town who matters. Her voice, along with other children, need parents, the ones here today and the ones like myself, who will step up and advocate for what's best. I am that mother. I'm not afraid to admit when I'm wrong, or apologize when I'm in the wrong, or not afraid to be strong and courageous when the little ones need me to. Southington needs people in elected positions to have these tough conversations, not only for dialogue, but for compromises to be able to be made, so that we can find solutions together for all of the needs of the children. I feel as though I am the person this town should have on this very board. I have common sense, thick skin, and passion to help and to serve my community, and especially all of the children in it. My intention on this board is not only offering mass choice to parents when the time permits, but also ensuring students have the academically focused foundation that they need. I want to be the representative that can help attain resources and education for mental health support for all students, and I advocate for unification through interdependence with industrious, well-informed, and reverent residents within the community here. I do this to unite us all under the banner of "Education for the Children." I think these next couple of years, the board's main focus will have to be on catching several children who have fell behind due to the pandemic up to speed. I think each individual child should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, and the school should be offering some after-school tutoring, tutoring, and keeping the parents involved every step of the way. Thank you.
Good evening, all. I am Mark Greenstein, and I'm representing someone on, can't be here.
Excuse me, sir. Could you give your address, please?
309 Pilgrim.
In Southington?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's not my address, that's who I'm representing. I'm a high schooler that I'm helping as a tutor.
Point of order, Mr.--
Point of order?
I don't believe you can do that.
May I have a minute and a half of maybe somebody else's time, if somebody would like to hear about, I'm trying to help this board. May I do that? Is there somebody who would see some time?
Steve. He's not, if he's not, if you're not a Southington resident--
The policy is you gotta be a Southington resident. The policy is you have to be a Southington resident.
No, if you are, if you are not a resident of Southington, you don't speak at our board meetings.
I'm sorry, those are, those are the policies of the Board of Education. And I have to enforce them.
Is he representing a student? Like, are you an attorney?
No.
Could I make a suggestion?
Well, actually, yes, but not in this--
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you want to contact us, you could send us a letter or email.
Email, and we--
And we would read that. I mean, that way, you don't, because the policy is what it is.
I don't want to violate the policy.
But send us an email or a letter, and then--
Certainly an email to the entire Board of Education. We would be more than welcome to read that.
On the web, southingtonschools.org, and you can address the entire board, so that we'll all get the same email that you send.
All right, reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Young from Berkeley Avenue. I would like to begin tonight by voicing my disappointment with the comments recently made by our governor. The audacity of Governor Lamott to use his platform in order to reprimand concerned parents by stating that "we are an embarrassment" is completely absurd, arrogant, and speaks to his lack of compassion and overall ineptitude. He is an embarrassment. He should be ashamed of what he has done to our children. However, he continues to show complete disregard as he pushes forward with his one-man rule over the people of this state. As I have said before at previous meetings, schools are not hospitals, the staff are not doctors, therefore, no medical-- therefore, no medical interventions, including masks, medical testing, and vaccines should be administered in school or on school property. I would like to know who is taking personal responsibility and therefore liability for these medical interventions being placed upon our children. Simply stating that you're just following orders is no longer an acceptable defense. Who exactly is giving permission for this to happen? The fact that schools are offering vaccine clinics on premises is a criminal and should be treated as such. Earlier this week, the FDA approved the emergency use authorization of the COVID shot to children ages five to 11 years old. During public comment, Dr. Rubin, an FDA representative, when asked about his yes vote, stated, and I quote, "We are never going to learn about how safe this vaccine is unless we start giving it, and that's just the way it goes. That's how we found out about rare complications of other vaccines." This flippant response should terrify every parent. He is quite literally telling us that they don't know exactly how safe this shot really is, and that he's happy to risk the health of our children to find that out. I raise this concern because we all know that those mandates are coming. For the past 18-plus months, many of you have been silent when it comes to the blatant overreach of the Department of Health and Governor Lamont. That silence has stolen a carefree innocence from our children that they will never get back. It has stolen playtime with their friends and the ability to see their faces and smiles. You've allowed the theft of participation in sports and extracurricular activities. You have stolen from them vital interaction on every level. They have fallen behind in school and have missed developmental milestones. They've suffered from mental illnesses, and tragically, some have even taken their own lives. These innocent children have been completely destabilized, and the damage may be incalculable. Do you even comprehend the madness of coercing and shaming children to harmful mask mandates, invasive and inaccurate testing, and vaccines that are still in clinical trials? Or have the dollar signs of federal funding completely obstructed your ability to see clearly the damage you're allowing to happen to our children? Parents like myself have had enough. In the coming week, when we cast our ballots, we will use our voices to stop those of you who have been silent when it comes to protecting our children. This is just another step we will take in order to restore what you have been allowed to steal.
Patricia Tavolozi, 99 Westbrook Road, Plansville, Connecticut. First, we were told that we should approve the Lotto because the money would be used for fix our public education system and improve our roads. Then we were told that we should vote to raise the sales taxes because we needed that money for education and to fix our roads. Then we were told that we should okay gambling at casinos because that money raised from that would be used to fix our education systems and improve our roads. And then we raised the taxes on gasoline and those fees on vehicle registration to improve our roads. Then we legalized marijuana, to obvious reasons. Then we were told that the revenue raised by taxing the marijuana sales could be used to improve our public education system. And now that all that public education system is one of the worst in the world, our students consistently score in the bottom half in math and science. We are now being told we need $3.5 trillion to fix our infrastructure. My only question is, where's the money going? Tonight, I'm not going to rain down statistics on you, I'm going to rain down the truth of God. This board owes our town, our community, our parents, an explanation for these funds that you so desperately needed that you sacrificed our children for collateral ads to get your dirty money. What we have done for, what have you done for this money to help bring these students below standard scores up? What programs have you initiated? What did you do to get each student to where they need to be to help them from this fail that we had the past year? Did it go to enhanced CRT teachings? Oh, shh, we don't talk about that, because that doesn't happen in our town, does it? Are we using it to purchase inappropriate books that teach children borderline pornography, if not full pornography, to our students in middle schools and high school? I mean, of course, we wouldn't have done those things in our school or shown those books, or even have them in our library, or do we? Yeah, we do. How is this money for our children helping them when you are enslaving them for it? I have really held out every day hoping you'd stop this madness, hoping you'll stand up and do what's right for our children. But apparently, that's not going to happen, because the dollar signs attached to the decisions by what you made your answer to. You said it yourself at this meeting. At the last meeting, excuse me. I mean, come on, guys, you sold your soul for the money, and you used our children as collateral to obtain it. Well, not all of you. And now, you can't say no to it because there have grave consequences attached to it. Because you accepted it under a certain guise, that you would fulfill every one of their checkmarks that they demanded on that list. Now, let's be honest. What you've done can't be undone. You blazed your path of monetary gluttony, and you used this town's children to do it. Make no mistake, you will be judged for this crime. When the smokescreen clears, your regret will run deep. You've masked our children, God's children. You've locked them down, you're allowing indoctrination of corrupt ideas into their minds, you're subjecting them to experimental vaccines with no long-term studies on them, along with their teachers. So make no bones about what you've done, and you continue to do it. Your complicities will not acclaim you. You will be judged. As a wise man said, in the end, we will not remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. May God have mercy on your souls.
Susan Zabahansky, 28 Working Street. Parents have been to these last seven or eight board meetings at the expense of time with their family. You guys serve at expense with time to your family, and we understand that. I'm looking forward to Tuesday and seeing some new faces on this board at the next Board of Education meeting. We feel that our voices have fallen on deaf ears. We've heard that you can't do anything, you can't speak against the state, that's totally untrue. We've heard that you'll lose funding. No governor is going to exclude funding from Southington because of our pushback against him. It would be political suicide, and there's no way he would do it. Esser Funds, yes, do have guidelines in the state, we all know that. Those are the COVID funding. The guidelines change from state to state. We can request that our state change those guidelines. I'm going to be asking for every new board member on this board to push for that at the state level. That's all we've asked for you to do, we've had no one do that for us. I recently sent a communication to James, Joe, and Missy regarding the fact that you guys say you can be held personally liable, and you've used that continuously as your excuse not to take action. Shipman and Goodwin are attorneys, I know, sent out a letter. No one gave that to me, they said it was done during executive session. But I do have a copy of that letter. That is a biased opinion piece, written by an attorney. Another attorney could write the same exact thing. There's not a single Board of Education member on here who would not be covered by town funding if a suit was held personally against them. We're just asking that you step up for our children. We're asking that these guidelines that have been put in place, that have basically caused their education to suffer, we've seen that. It's caused mental damage to children. Anyone who denies that is living in a box. Even Children's Department has said that it's, the mental health crisis is the crisis, not the COVID crisis in children. All we ask is that the next board members, whoever it be, whoever comes back on here, stand up at the state level and push back. It just takes one progressive town to do that. We're supposedly the city of progress, and I'd like to see it done at the next, on the next board. So we'll see some new faces in here, I know. And I'm looking forward to working with whoever comes on. And we thank everyone for their service, who's put up with us for the last two, seven months, or whatever we've been coming. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers this evening? Mrs. Clark, you have any?
Yes, I do, Mrs. Carmody.
Okay.
Ms. O'Shaughnessy, if you'll keep the time for me, please. Thank you. Oh, somebody wants to speak.
I asked.
Thank you, Ignatia. I just wanted to ask very quickly, what is the difference specifically to Mr. O'Shaughnessy? What is the difference today that you're here wearing a mask versus when you were at the meet-the-candidate's gathering, and you had, I seen your face for the first time? What's the difference? Why are you, I just wanted to know, because I was sitting there, and I'm just like, I seen his face for the first time in the building, and I'm like, what's the difference? And today, the inconsistency, it's like, today, Mrs. Carmody doesn't have a mask on. And I'm all for mass choice, I'm pro-mask choice, pro-vaccine choice. I just want to know, what's the difference? And why so much inconsistency everywhere I look, nationally, state level, and then local? Why do you guys do it for? That's it, that's all I want to know.
So, ma'am, I'd like to raise a point of order. Public comment is for comments, not for questions.
Yes, I know. I, I, thank you, I was just going to say that. Mrs. Clark, now you have something to read into the record.
Dear Board of Education members and Mr. Medancy, I am writing today to express my support for the finalization of the courses proposed that would broaden our students' lens of history. I would like to take a moment to explain why I personally and professionally support this diversity in educational offerings. I grew up in a very diverse city, but attended an all-girls Catholic high school. These courses were not offered in my school, but my real-life experience was in direct contradiction to the things I was being taught in books. I remember feeling ill-equipped to communicate with my peers and often had questions that, when asked of my school, were not given answers or were diverted from. This created quite a gap between my experience of the world and my experience in school. To that point professionally, as I moved through my undergraduate work at UConn, I was offered several more opportunities to explore some of the ideologies that others, particularly my classmates, possessed. I was embarrassed by my lack of understanding of different cultures, having unknowingly made contributions in class that I would later be challenged on simply because I was uninformed. These were growth experiences for me, however, I would have liked to have had something concrete to offer based on solid events in history. I was asked a question in my twenties by someone who took the time to ask the question when they certainly didn't owe me that. The question was, what do you know and understand about where these things originated from that is giving you the impression that you can understand someone from this part of the country? By then, my exposure to the South was a few fun-filled trips to Disney World and a glossed-over view of events like the Civil War and some policies that I had read about that made it all sound like everything was better. I am writing this because not exploring all the facets of history is doing our students a huge disservice in preparing them for college in the world outside of Southington. I would like for them to be offered in a whole picture to be able to think critically and objectively about that, so they can formulate their broader lens of this country and this world. Knowledge leads to understanding and an ability to think about problems and issues from all angles, not just their own. I thank you for adding these courses as options to the high school, and I am in support of information being offered so that I can further discuss with my four children at home to better prepare them for the diversity that they will be lucky to experience once they leave our town. Thank you for your time, and please read my letter into the record at a time you find appropriate. Sincerely, Christian Von Tempe, parent of four, 40 Washington Drive in Southington.
That would be, that would be it.
All right, next on our agenda is communication from the Board of Ed. I would like to begin first, and then I will turn to the board members. I would like to give a very sincere thank you to the DePaulo students who, after suffering the tragedy with the death of Mr. Santinella, were able to, the next evening, I believe, wasn't it the very next evening, was the music of the night? And those DePaulo students, who he worked so hard with and who loved him dearly, went out, I think they were the first ones to go out that next night and perform, and to perform well. And so, to all of those students, our sincere thanks for what you did and how you honored a man that worked so hard to give you everything. So I just wanted to say thank you. And to all of the parents who have been here for the last four, five, six meetings, we do listen to you. I know that many of you do not sincerely believe that we have a mandate that we have to follow. And that mandate is, if you look up the definition of the word mandate, a mandate is a law. And we are bound to abide by the law of the governor. And you're all entitled to your own opinion about masks, and they do differ from all different people. Also, with CRT, and we will be talking about that a little bit later, we do not teach CRT in our schools. It was suggested in something that I read, in either an email or a text, that someone found that we were doing CRT in some of our schools, and I asked to please bring forth to the administration, or to the board as a whole, any examples of CRT, and that would be dealt with by the administration. We have not, and I spoke with the administration, they have not seen any examples of that. So I ask again, before we have rumors and innuendos of what the board is doing, that if you have examples of that, please bring it forth. That is all I have to say. Any other board members have any comments? Yes, Mrs. Clark?
Yeah, I just want to share with the rest of the board. I attended the Cabe Seminar yesterday in Rocky Hill. It was a legal issues workshop. They had three areas that they discussed, and I brought back the literature. I couldn't snack copies for everybody, but if you just want to take a look, and there's chicken scratch. The three areas that they covered were the employment challenges in Connecticut right now for school districts, with particular mention of the executive order 13G, the vaccine mandate, and collective bargaining, what's involved with, due to COVID. The second area that they talked about, that was done by Rich Mills. The second one was done by, the presenter was Zach Shurenin, and it was the legal contours of board member speech. Our First Amendment right versus the rights as a board member of what we can and cannot say. What can be said from executive session, obviously, nothing. But they also talked about the implications of social media, people and board members, their rights versus being a board member. One line that the attorney had that I just particularly stuck in my head. A board of education does not exist between meetings, which is something for all board members to think about. Board of Ed doesn't exist unless we're meeting together. And the last area that they talked about was emerging legal issues. They briefly touched on bus driver shortages, which the attorney was concerned that there was going to be a large issue with that. However, what he indicated, throughout most of the state, the issue has not been there's a bus driver shortage. It seems that the bus companies have been working that problem out on their own. Public meetings, changing, the change-up in public meetings. And they also then had another session regarding federal funding, but I unfortunately had to get back to work because I had little ones coming in at 12:30. So that was it. If you have any questions, I have the thing here, the explanation, and I'll be happy to share. If you can read my chicken scratch, good luck.
Yes, Ms. O'Shaughnessy?
Thank you.
So, I'd like to just discuss why I wear a mask at Board of Education meetings. And I've said on several occasions, at several prior meetings, that I wear a mask at Board of Education meetings because if we're requiring our teachers, our students, and our staff to wear them at school, I think we as board members should, if we can't wear it for two hours, three hours at a Board of Education meeting, when we're requiring our students to wear them and their staff to wear them, and our teachers to wear them, six, seven, eight hours a day, I think that we're not modeling the behavior that we should be modeling, and that, you know, if we're representatives of the board, I think this is the type of behavior we should be modeling. Whether we choose to wear... Whether we choose to wear them outside of board meetings, that's a different story. But at a Board of Education meeting, I think it's appropriate, if we're requiring our staff to wear them, I think we should model that behavior. And I've been completely consistent with that. Actually, I've mentioned that at prior meetings, several meetings in the past, that I would be wearing it and I would continue to wear it as long as this mandate is in place. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I have four items I'd like to talk about. First one is that I am proud to announce that on April 26th of 2022, it's amazing, 2022 to even say that, but we'll be having a gala, an enormous gathering of all of the Wall of Honor honorees for the last 20 years. And there is, by the way, a wall at the high school of the students who've gone to our schools and gone on in life and done some amazing things. We should all be proud of those people and knock on wood. We're hoping that in April, we can actually have the dinner that we planned a year ago and never had. We also have some new people to induct who have never been inducted because of COVID, et cetera. So more information about tickets, et cetera, will be out. Tickets aren't printed yet, but we will be using public media, et cetera, to tell people. And I would hope everyone in this room would attend that. The second of all, I'd like to thank, first of all, the outgoing board members. I think Missy's the only one that we know of right now as being an outgoing board member, but I want to thank Missy for her service, especially on curriculum where we serve together. And she helped a great deal to view our curriculum in ways that were beneficial to, I think, our students. It's been a pleasure to work with you, Missy, and to get to know you a little more. And those are great apple fritters too, thank you. So thank you for your service. I think now, I think, having been on the board for a couple of years, you realize the amount of time and the stress that's involved with this, but you were always willing to do that. So thank you for your service. I also want to wish all those... I would also like to wish all those people running for office good luck. It's not easy to campaign and to run. I am not a political person myself. It's funny, I taught history and social studies and love teaching about it, but I hate everything about it with a passion. I do. I do this for the same reason many of us do it, because I care deeply about children and about teachers being able to teach children, and that's it. So best of luck to everybody. I hope people get out and vote and we'll see what happens in two weeks. It should be interesting. I have two other more serious things I'd like to talk about. The third one is, I want to mention my disappointment at recent coverage of our meetings and our candidates in the Merida newspaper. I spent over 30 minutes giving very thoughtful answers to questions and many issues we face right now in public education. And the article they printed two days ago about the candidates never mentioned a thing I said. The social and emotional health of our students, and it's interesting, we may have some differences with some of the people in the audience, but we all do agree, I believe, that the social, emotional health of our students is absolutely essential right now for us to pay attention to and do something about. And I would add that the social, emotional health of our staff too, because what they've gone through for the last couple of years, the hours spent, the stress, the demands on their performance and their jobs, and they have families, et cetera, has been beyond anything that's really anyone's ever experienced before. So that's important. As a Board of Education, the safety and emotional health of our students, as well as how to best teach all students, are and should be our primary concerns. I'm also disappointed the same newspaper has chosen to never once report the factual explanations, which some of you have referred to, but never the newspaper, that I've given for four meetings in a row now about some of the legal consequences of not following the mandates. And also the fact that it's the governor's decision based on his professional scientific medical and health experts. I hope the newspaper improves the reporting on the meetings. I would like to close this comment by saying we all need to work better together to help our students learn and help our educators teach. That is why I am here and I think most of us are here. And I do have one last thing and I hesitate to say this, but I'm going to say it because I think we have to be courageous about standing up for what we believe in. I have known Mrs. Carmody for over 40 years. She is a good, decent human being. She was a good teacher. She cared about her kids. She would often take classes that were the toughest students to teach. And she took those classes willingly every year. She asked for them. Nobody else was asking for them. And then she retired and she went and ran for Board of Education and she has volunteered her time for, I won't even ask how many years, to go to meetings, these meetings and other meetings we have, curriculum meetings and all the other things, budget and everything else. She's not perfect. I'm not perfect. None of us are perfect. She's done the best she could do in a very difficult circumstance. Today, I found out that somebody decided to post a picture on social media in Southington of Mrs. Carmody in a trash can with a trash truck either running her over or throwing her away as trash. That is despicable. That's as low as you can get. Can you imagine what the children and grandchildren she has who love her dearly and her husband must have thought when they saw that picture? Can you imagine? This is a good, decent human being. Shame on anyone who shames people for trying really hard to do the right thing. Shame on you. The amount of time we spend doing the Board of Education work, and there's things I've gotten wrong and I'm sure she would admit there's some things she's gotten wrong too. There's things I wish we could do better. And I would say we need to work towards doing it better. But it shouldn't be a personal attack on somebody. A trash can and a trash truck. It should not be that. It should be, I don't agree with what you believe in or what you said, and here's why. I said this last time and I'll say it again, in my classroom, I stressed the fact, and I think Mr. Belishevsky can probably agree with this, it's good for us to listen to each other and to disagree. I know he and I probably disagree on a lot of things. But I sat and talked to him after the curriculum meeting we had and we had a very cordial conversation and we're trying to work on some things that he believes in and I happen to agree with him about. But it's a cordial conversation. It's polite and respectful. It's not personal. It's not attacking him or myself as a piece of trash. So I want to apologize publicly for whoever did that and I would hope he would learn from that. Across this country right now, we're seeing Board of Education meetings being ripped apart by people who are angrily coming and yelling and screaming at people who volunteer their time to serve on a Board of Education. And I will absolutely admit to you, we don't get everything right. We don't. This mask thing really bothers me and frustrates me. But when people say, well, you've been bought, and I mean, the quotes I write down from the meetings about how we've sold our souls for money, you're talking about millions of dollars of state aid. That's not something somebody made up. This town is not going to make up the difference. We would have to lay off a bunch of people or do something to make up the difference. And the liability issues, nobody made that one up. That's from attorneys. I know board members who've told me personally, they would not vote to not do the mask mandate even though they don't agree with it because they don't want to lose their house. You shouldn't be asking public officials to put their house on the line, and I'll be honest with you, over something that it looks to me, based on the other things we've done in the mask, we've been able to keep the schools open by wearing masks in school. And last thing, I could talk forever about this, but let's work on what's really important for teaching kids. Let's have dialogue about how do we help the kindergarten who has not yet been in a room with other kids and when they're put in that room, they can't even behave and they have to be sent out of the room? Disciplining a kindergartner for not behaving? We haven't seen that kind of thing before. First graders, because they haven't been in a setting with other kids. We should care about that kind of thing. The suicide rates, in fact, are going up. That's extremely troubling. Let's figure it out instead of calling names and insulting people. You're not going to get people up here to run for a Board of Ed if they have to be abused and then they have to spend, a couple of us spent seven hours last week in a mediation session and seven hours in a mediation session the week before that. The pay for that was zero. In fact, it cost me a lot of money to run for the Board of Ed for crying out loud. I could go out and substitute teach and make a lot of money, well, a lot of money, but instead, we do this and then we get abused? Please, let's have decency and let's put the concerns of our kids. And I would agree with you that whether or not a student wears a mask is an important consideration in the social, emotional health of the students. We shouldn't deny all of that, but there's an awful lot more to the picture than just the mask. There's some very serious issues out there that we really need to be concerned about. We have a great town. We have great students. We have great staff. We have great parents. We have great people in this town. Let's get together and, no matter who's up here in two weeks, and work on helping our kids to cope with a world that's very troubled right now. So I'm done. Just, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Joe?
Bobby didn't leave much, much, much anything unturned, so.
I had four more pages, Bob.
Again, what everybody brought forward this evening in regards to security, to CRT, to the masking, the ability to choose. Again, looking around this room this evening, you know, we're adults. We're expected to make decisions and we make decisions based on the information that we have and our threshold for safety. And that's what it boils down to, is we're able to make individual decisions. I understand the frustration and I think, you know, the take-home message is essentially we're not being allowed to make decisions for ourselves and for our families. One thing that COVID's made very evident to me is the absolute skeleton of control that a local Board of Ed is able to exert over our district. And that's something that bothers me because the people who know best for the kids in Southington are our administration, our staff members, and our parents. You know, I had a chance to talk with a couple of students from the high school last week and a couple of parents as well. And the reason that some people don't come to a meeting to voice their opinion or to send an email is sometimes this fear of retaliation. I don't know where this fear essentially comes from. Certainly, I would never begrudge anyone from speaking their mind and letting their opinion be heard. I think it's important. It helps us make decisions. And, you know, again, like it's, we have to do better, as Bob said, about seeing each other eye to eye. You know, at the end of the day, with all these things, security, CRT, masking versus mask choice, it boils down to who's the most important teacher in a child's life? You know, people may disagree with me, but it's the parents. It's the grandparents. It's the aunts. It's the uncles. And we only get a small smidge of that child every day during the week. That's six hours. You can't undo bad decisions in six hours. You can't essentially correct social or, you know, emotional issues that may have happened over the course of, especially a COVID, where some students weren't able to escape the bad situation in a home setting. This is a complex issue. We're going to be dealing with this for a decade. And we could get rid of the masks tomorrow and, you know, we could vaccinate, offer vaccinations to everybody. This is not going to go away very quickly. And, you know, we're really at an important point as board members. You know, whoever wins, I guess, next week, you know, again, regardless of who it is, that needs to be the forefront of what we do, is essentially getting back some of that individualism that we can have as a community to be able to make appropriate decisions for our kids, for our staff, and get that input from them that doesn't let them feel that they're going to be retaliated against. That bothers me. So again, thank you, parents, for showing up. Thank you for the staff that shows up to our meetings. And Michelle, you were like always, always here. I love seeing you. But, you know, again, like what we do in this district is something special and I think it's just more of, let's focus on the good and let's keep pounding at it. So thank you.
Thanks. Is it okay?
Yes, Missy.
Okay.
First of all, Mr. Brown, thank you for sharing all you did and bringing that awareness of what was posted on social media. Mrs. Carmody, I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry that that happened. I did not know before tonight and that is an awful testament to a great community and I pray that someone asks you for their forgiveness personally. It's unacceptable on every level. The other thing I wanted to address is some of the concerns tonight, not all of them. Safety, and Megan, you're still here, and I'm going to say that I know that safety for our children or all of our staff is paramount. My first round with the budget two years ago, one of the biggest things we talked about was safety of our schools. And it was meeting after meeting. So I know the many things that have gone on in the schools. Some we don't know, but I can assure you that your concerns and all the parents' concerns, our concerns are being handled by our administration. And if they are not, I encourage every parent to make sure that your concerns are made known. But I know that they're working hard. The other thing I wanted to talk about is Mike, is he's gone?
He's outside. He just went in the hall.
He went, okay. But he had his mask on and he said that he's calling the masses of what's going on in all of the Board of Education meetings and the governor saying that they're monsters. This board has never once, not any of us ever, thought any of our parents as being monsters. I think time and time again, the first responses after you all spoke, we said, thank you. Thank you for being advocates for your children. Thank you for caring. Thank you for coming to talk to us. We, I do believe, one meeting ago, we all said that we did not feel like you were attacking us. So he's not here to address his concern, but I think it's very important for us to realize that and please share that with him. None of us think that. What's going on in the global world, there are things going on that you need to listen to, but we also need to keep it honed in on home and how we treat each other here and what we can move here in our district and how we treat each other here is very important. I also wanted to just highlight, I know we talked about the volleyball team. I would happen to be at the games. Our JV team went undefeated. It was amazing to watch that. These young girls, they were phenomenal. We only have one senior on our volleyball team. And that gymnasium for it was plastered with her picture. I mean, you talk about movie star today. It was so amazing to be in there. It was really cool. I also wanted to share my privilege of being in the Black-Latino class this past week. I had the honor to be in school at 7:20 in the morning. It was not great. No, it was great. I brought donuts for both classes. I like to bring treats. You know that, right? It's really cool. The classes for both of them were amazing. I could go on for hours about these classes, but I won't. But I want to tell you a couple of highlights from different classes. Each class had about 14 children and 14 different youth, male, female, Black, Latino, biracial, white, Hispanic. It was amazing. They bombarded me with tons of questions, you know? They bombarded me about me being Black and being on the Board of Education and we had dialogue about what they were learning. And I asked them about the oppression, if they felt any. Did they have the concerns that are being slated in these CRTs? Do you feel like you're white and being told that you're a racist? Do you feel these different things that we're talking about, that those six points? And all of them said no. All of them said no. They said that they have learned more about themselves in these classes. They have learned currently about African studies and they kept bringing up food. So I really want to go back to the class because they get all these different kinds of food. The food that they're learning about, what they learned about the food was that it was the base of how all the rest of the food and different things came from Africa and they were ignited by that. There were two students, so I'm going to pick one of each class that said something, so it stuck in my head. The first class, the student said, I wish everyone could take this class because it has brought us together. That class had brought a division that those students, Black, White, Latino mix, feel like now they see each other on the same playing field. To have these students sit there and tell me that time and time To have these students sit there and tell me that time and time again, it was amazing. The other student, he said to me, "I realize that race is a construct because we're all one race, we're all human race, and we have learned more from one another by exposing some not-so-good history, but realizing that it comes from a different area. It's not that we need to hate each other, but that we have more in common than we thought we didn't have." And that was amazing, and so I taught, I shared a lot, I'm sure staff could tell you, I shared a bunch of my, they know some secrets about Mississippi Reynolds, kind of crazy, um, hope they don't share them. Um, but we talked about common ground, and one thing I shared with them is that we all have common ground. If we get down to the bones of it, there's a common ground for all of us, and we will have more power and victory together if we get there first, instead of coming from the outside with our, so, that was amazing, thank you, I'm so proud to have that in our schools, I'm so glad to be part of a class, it was just exhilarating. My last point is going to talk about my exit. I'm leaving, this is my last Board of Education meeting, it's bittersweet, um, but I will say, two years ago I was elected, I am very proud and very just blessed with the folks that I've known in this community for over twenty years, I've been involved, and I can't even tell you how much. One of the students said to me, "How do you do all the stuff that you do?" I'm like, "I don't know, you don't ask me that, I just make a list and just go." Um, but in December, once we got into the first board meeting, and I had to, like, list this, December through, um, January, I'm a new board member, I got to figure out how to read a budget, right? It's a lot of page budget. How do you do this without guidance and, and all these new things going on? So I sit down and have a powwow with a couple of board members, but then we go through the budget meetings, and we're going in, and then February, and then March hit, and it's COVID. That was bad, it's bad in so many ways, but when you're talking to board members, myself, James, and Dave Flavos down here, new board members, one of the, the wonderful thing about boards, which I've set on differently, is that you build community by being together. We didn't have an opportunity to build really good community because of COVID. So there was lack of communication, lack of getting to know each other, not getting to know each other's strengths and each other's weaknesses, because we're before a screen, and we really don't know each other. So that was a, a hit that none of us expected, and yet we worked through it, I managed to build really great relationships. In the three months that I did have, I met with every single principal in our district. Every, I met with Frank Pepe, I met with every vice principal if I could, I met with Josie Regala, and I met and did classes in the high school, I went to multiple functions with Chris Palmieri, and so in three months, Chris is here, and that short a time, I was able to facilitate and get in to let people see who I am and my intention. Angelica talked about her intention of running for the board, that's exactly what I share with our principals. My intention is because I love students, I love parents, and I love my Southington community. And so it wasn't a lot of, it was a lot of work, but I don't, I'm all good with work. Uh, stress, eh, deal with it when it comes, but my continue on after the board is that I'm going to be on steps, I'm staying on steps, I'm going to keep the communication to the board, so you're not going to not see me, sorry, I'll be on that side though with three minutes. Um, I get five. I'm going to go back and resume my role at Karen Smith Academy as Vice Chair of the PTO. I'm going to help liaison with their juniors for capstone, totally excited about brainstorming with them. I am actually going to the state level to lobby for education, so in January I start in a different role, working hard for education in a different site. So, I look forward to attending the meetings, and I know the board going ahead, and we're never going to have another shutdown and do Zoom meetings, again, no more Zoom meetings, guys, don't do it, it's really bad. Uh, but thank you all, thank each one of you for getting to know me, dealing with me, and helping me through these last two years, it's been great, and I'll see you again. All right? Thank you, Missy.
Any other board members? Thank you. That was very nice, Missy, thank you. Um, next we have, uh, communication from our administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Missy, thank you for your service and support of the, of the schools these past few years, and, yeah, I have no doubt will continue to cross paths.
Why did he have a twitch when he said that?
Um, maintenance staff recognition, I just wanted to make sure I took a moment and an opportunity to recognize our maintenance staff. Um, as you know, under the leadership of Mr. Romano, uh, one of the big projects for the capital improvement, uh, plan was the, uh, fitness center down in the basement of the high school. Um, the floor was, was almost deemed pretty much unsafe at this point, the equipment had been aged out, and, um, it wasn't a, a space for the PE classes or any of the teams to really take advantage of, and so with the support of this board and our Board of Finance through the, the non-lapsing account, um, that was a major project that was undertaken this summer, um, and it is, uh, pretty much at this point, just about finishing touches. The equipment was, uh, delivered this week, the flooring is down, all the new rebel flooring. Our maintenance staff laid the flooring themselves versus us paying for an install, it saved us about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, just, you know, put up new sheet rock, painted the entire place, it looks great. Uh, so just a credit to the maintenance department for, you know, that extra work on that project, so if you have a chance to stop in and see that, because we've been talking about that space, I feel like for a few years now, so, um, that's exciting. Uh, an update for you on the athletic facilities, because along those same lines, while we were able to get that project done, um, not so much with some of the other projects, and a lot of it has to do with, um, competition for labor right now coming out of, of COVID, as well as labors and materials. Um, so the master athletic, uh, athletic facility plan prepared by Castle Booze included short-term projects as well as long-term plan upgrades to the high school sports fields. Uh, during the 2021 budget process, the Board of Ed approved six short-term projects. Um, and I bring this to you now because it's, we're about to go into the budget and the capital improvement plan will come up again, um, and so it's just a good time to revisit. In July, the administration and Castle Booze sent out six bids for the short-term athletic projects. The bids were for softball, irrigation, baseball, tennis court repairs, running track repairs, and bleacher improvements, specifically handrails and safety fencing, and I know you've heard a lot about that from some residents in our community. While many vendors attended the mandatory walkthrough for the projects, we received bids only for softball, baseball, and irrigation. Um, so they're not even bidding on the projects, which would, puts us, uh, you know, the timeline pushes it back. The irrigation bid was awarded, and the initial repair work is underway for that. However, the bids received on the softball project were cost prohibitive, uh, due mainly to the rising cost of raw materials, uh, for fencing. As a result, neither the softball nor baseball bids were awarded. Uh, the Athletic Director worked with Castle Booze to refine the scope of the softball project, and now both the softball and baseball projects are being rebid this week. Um, bids are due back November twelfth. The administration hopes to bring a bid forward to the finance committee prior to the December board meeting. Um, and lastly, uh, we'll continue to work on the remaining short-term projects, the capital plan will be presented during the November four, uh, board meeting for a first read, and it will include a line item for the long-term athletic projects. Uh, I did have a chance to go walk the facilities with Mr. Risser and Mr. Donello, Mr. Crocco, and I will say, the tennis courts and track are something we have to keep a very close eye on, you know, we did some crack repair a few years back, it served us for, for the time, uh, but it's, it's definitely, it was more of a Band-Aid than a solution. Um, some of the cracks there, if you go up there, they're wide enough to actually stick a tennis ball in, and, you know, that creates an unsafe playing surface and a hazard for, you know, stu- students using that, that facility, so we have to keep a close eye on that. Um, second, I know you remember Mr. Covino, uh, he came and did a presentation for us at a, a past meeting, um, and it's just, uh, we, he talked about one of the benefits of Southington ended, uh, entering into a collaborative with surrounding towns was eligibility for grants. So this week, we received great news. Um, Bristol Adult Education is proud to announce that we have received full funding for the Fiscal Twenty-Two Program Enhancement Project Grants. This means that our adult learners from Bristol, Plainville, Southington, and Farmington will be able to participate in four new innovative programs. Um, Employability Skills, Family Literacy, Manual Factoring Math, and the Integrated English Literacy and Civic Allied Healthcare Program in conjunction with Tungusis Community College. So I know Mr. Burcheski has been talking to me about healthcare opportunities for our staff for a while, um, we'll, we'll forward more specifics as we get that, but it just was, it's a, again, it's another advantage to entering into that collaborative, so I thank you for supporting that last spring. Um, and then lastly, just more of an anecdotal, I know the Google Classroom may have had so, uh, some glitches, but what this board would be proud to know is that when every student at Southington High School, because we've not had all students in there at one time, all with a device, since this has occurred. Last year it was a hybrid model, right, and, and so not all students were present every day, or if they were, we didn't need all devices at once so far this year. When they started their first capstone lesson, every student got on a device, and the Wi-Fi worked in every space, and the network held up.
Did you call Chris Louise? Did you call Chris? You gotta call Chris Louise and tell him that.
So, I mean, it's, it's a test, I mean, we didn't, we didn't stretch the bandwidth all that much, they were just on Google Classroom, but, all of you know, this has been a conversation that's been ongoing for years. It's also a, a thank you to you for the support last spring of the infrastructure upgrades that were critical, uh, at that time, knowing coming back in, uh, this fall, the scenario would look different with all the students return and devices online.
That's great.
That's all for me this evening, thank you.
What a great report, thank you.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Um, next on the agenda, I lost my place, um, committee reports. Bob, curriculum and instruction, which was a great meeting.
Thank you. Um, this is a bit lengthy, but it, I think it's very important stuff. We met on October eighteenth. Uh, present were, uh, myself and Mrs. Carmody, and Mrs. Supriano, administrators, uh, Frank Pepe, uh, Diane Holt Scruby, Jennifer De Senza, Beth Vines, Anna Napolitano, uh, some of those are guidance counselors, some of those are administrators. I also want to give a huge shout-out, they weren't in attendance, but, um, Mr. Roy and Ms. Allenback, um, Social Studies Department Chair, and then a, um, Assistant Principal, did an awful lot of work on collecting data, which I'll report on later about Critical Race Theory, so I want to really thank them personally for everything. So, we talked about three items, the first was the capstone presentation. Mrs. Holt Scruby and Mr. Pepe presented an overview. Southington High School is determined to make this graduation requirement a meaningful experience. The current junior class is the first to endure the requirement, interesting word, um, therefore the experience will continue to evolve until it becomes a four-year process starting a freshman year. Students curate a digital portfolio which they will leave high school with and use as a resource for entering the workforce or higher education. The portfolios, uh, portfolio is comprised of student-selected samples demonstrating each of the Cs. The Cs are directly embedded in our vision of a graduate, and thus each student demonstrates their respective mastery of the essential components of Southington's, um, vision of a graduate. Mike Gagnon and Kerry Peschel, among others, worked themselves to prepare online lessons, they worked very hard on this. These lessons are delivered to students during planned advisory periods throughout the year. These advisory periods are also known as capstone. Based on the board's wishes, the same presentation can be offered to the full board and/or sample student portfolio shared as the year progresses, so we hope to see some of that. Um, I will say this also, in addition to the, those notes, that when we talked about what we have to do and what we are going to do, we, we are whole, setting a bar much higher than a lot of other towns have. Some of the other towns are putting a bar like, well, they take the SAT test or something. Our bar is quite high. It involves four years of, of focused work, not only will it help in, um, career choices, but also should help in course selections even when they're in high school. The second thing we talked about was a grade point leveling presentation, um, and I will be given some personal thoughts about this later, which is something I really learned from the presentation. This is where the guidance counselors all came in, and they presented the justification of pre-proposed shift. In two thousand ten, NEAS, NEAS, if you don't know, is the organization which evaluates high schools, uh, and they come in every, basically every ten years. They came in two thousand ten, I think they were supposed to be there two thousand twenty, but because of everything, it's been deleted a little bit, right?
They're, yeah, they're currently, they started in two thousand twenty, and then there was postponed because of COVID.
Right, right, but, but they make recommendations, um, and they had promoted, uh, a low, prompted a level collapse from four to three. The most recent NEAS evaluation advised continuing this shift. The recommendation is to isolate three levels, academic, honors, and AP UConn ECE. In addition to this work, the high school has discovered a challenge of inflated GPAs. Research demonstrates, and I want to explain that so it makes sense, um, demonstrates the most common colleges and universities, uh, a Southington High School graduate applies to ignores our current GPA calculation because of the inflation, I'll explain all that. Instead, the institution of higher education recalculate the applicant's GPA based on a four-point-oh scale. This change in practice will benefit any students engaged in the mission process. Again, at the wishes of the full board, a complete presentation may be scheduled. It's interesting, when I first came across this, and Mrs. Carmody was the, uh, curriculum chair at the time, I don't know, three or four years ago, my impression was that we had very high overall grades in the high school, and that was either because teachers were easy graders, or because we have amazingly successful students. It turns out it's neither one of those. What it is, is we have a system that is flawed. The system weights different courses, but the weighting drove up the averages so high that, um, I think the recent average, which is amazing, is eighty, was it eighty-five percent, I believe, of, eighty-five percent of students had an average of B or higher. Uh, so that is very high, so what the colleges were doing is recalculating that, and in some cases, they were denying entrance into college of some of our students, because when they recalculated, they came out with something that wasn't really fair, if that makes sense. So this change should really help our students when they're applying to college. It's going to be to a four-point-oh system, it will still have some weighting involved with it, but not skewing it the way it was previously skewed, if that makes sense. Um, so that was a terrific presentation, which I think we all learned something from.
And we are following what the colleges want us to.
Right, this is what the colleges have asked for, right. And the last one is Critical Race Theory. Um, I had asked, previously I had asked, uh, Mr. Pepe, and then Ms. Allenback and Mr. Roy, and if they would survey the high school social studies teachers, and ask them a series of questions about Critical Race Theory, and then we would share the answers at a curriculum meeting, and then share it with the board, and that then becomes a public document. The, the document, I believe, will be attached to the minutes of this meeting, that should be something, and I'm going to go through some of it, but not all of it, it's too long to read the whole thing. Um, that is something that the public should have access to, you should be able to go in there, read the document, read the answers, read what the, what people said, and if you have any questions or comments or anything else, then please contact either Mr. Pepe or one of us, um, be glad to talk about it. So, the first question asked was, "Are you familiar with Critical Race Theory?" A hundred percent said yes. The second question was, "If you answered yes to the above question, how did you learn about Critical Race Theory? We have not had workshops on it or anything else." Um, the answer was, "The media, all types, personal research, discussion with colleagues and scholars, and they never heard about it in undergraduate or graduate classes." So this is something that did not even exist when most of our teachers were in college. There was no, there were no courses on Critical Race Theory ten, twenty years ago, even though the history of it is longer than that, I'm glad to talk about that someday, but, um, these people had not ever been exposed to it in their, in their graduate and undergraduate work. The next question was, "To your knowledge, is Critical Race Theory taught in any courses you teach or in the school social studies department?" A hundred percent said no, and then the last question, which I'm not going to read all the answers to, because it's several pages long, I asked if, "Are racial issues or history or racism taught in your courses? Could you please list examples, at least one from each course you teach, if applicable?" And then they went on, they did a great job on this, collecting information about what exactly is taught in each one of our high school social studies courses, and you can read that, please go to the report and see it, it's several pages long, it's very detailed, um, that's what's taught. Beyond that, the Board of Ed really doesn't approve of anything else, we approve of curriculum. Um, I, I do believe that whoever's on this board should monitor this in response to one of the requests, we should monitor this constantly and make sure that we are doing what we are saying we are doing, you know, no one's trying to hide anything, or there's no conspiracy. Uh, I think we do all agree, which Mr. O'Shaughnessy pointed out last time, that some of the crazy ideas, maybe I shouldn't say crazy, but some of the ideas that we find reprehensible, I guess that's even worse, um, should not be taught in school. There's no one, I don't think, that says that we should teach any of those things, and if they are being taught, we should do something about it. So, uh, that is the end of my report, I'd be glad to answer questions from any members of the board, um, or comments.
Well, I, I just have one comment, I, I want to thank Diane for giving us, because Mr. Pepe tried, but I think you did a better job of explaining.
Not across the bow.
Should the minutes reflect that, was, uh, Mrs. Carmody?
I'm sorry, but Diane, I did not completely understand the capstone, and, and I, I just had such a, your, your chart was wonderful, and I felt when I left that meeting that I had, he tried, and he gave me a beginning, but you certainly- And I felt when I left that meeting that I had, he tried, and he gave me a beginning, but you certainly gave, I think, Diane, I mean, um, Missy, don't you think?
Oh, I think she did a wonderful job, but I'm an old capstone mom, so I'm like, you know, Steve knows, a long time ago, I was grilling him on capstone, so, yes.
I had two, remember I said I have two grandkids that are juniors, and I, they were asking me, and I, you know. So, um, I thank you personally for that, very much so. I thank Mr. Pepe a little bit. Thank you. It's a great meeting. Yes.
I just want to say, Mr. Brown, I, I think it would be a really good idea at, at a future board meeting for the GPA leveling to have a presentation, because I think it's something that parents don't understand. And I think by bringing them here and letting the parents see it, making it a public piece of information, because I know this, this has been an ongoing controversy with the parents, because entry into school is dependent upon this stuff, and how it gets recalculated, or if it gets recalculated. That even coupled with financial aid for the ability for a student to go onto college.
I think we mentioned that. We, we did talk about that.
It's a great idea, because even those of us who taught didn't really understand the problems before, before that. It was an excellent job. So, let's just make sure Mr. Pepe heard us and puts that on the schedule for the future, yes.
Excellent.
Yep.
We have that.
Thank you.
That's it for the curriculum. Any other questions? Anybody on the curriculum report? All right, next on our, uh, agenda, which I lost my place again, um, old business, policy, town government communication. I don't think we have anything, do we, Steve?
Nope.
Nope. Anybody?
No.
Um, then we will move to, I guess this would be you calling.
Yes, ma'am.
Policy.
Move to approve policy five-one-three-zero bullying prevention and intervention policy revision, as recommended by the policy and personnel committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Any questions, first of all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Although, any, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is new business. We have the credit recovery and summer school presentation, which will be done by Mr. De.
Yep.
Oh, thank you, okay.
If I could just do a, a quick introduction, um, I'd like to start by thanking both David and Heather. The, we reported out in the spring, you know, when people were asking, so what are we going to do with some of the federal funds? And we talked about learning loss. Uh, we talked about kids that were in jeopardy of losing credits, uh, who were struggling academically. We talked about kids that could use some, uh, enrichment remediation or support in the summertime, especially middle school, but even down into elementary. The undertaking here was huge. Uh, it's interesting, because, you know, they always say sometimes out of these things comes a silver lining. I don't know that Mrs. Allenback wants to do this forever, but, but there is, I think, a, a model now for credit recovery for kids in the spring, when we have the opportunity to get them daily, right, versus in the summertime, where both its availability of staff can be difficult, and then for students, it may not be when they're most primed to do that work. And so, that was monumental, and they've got some information to share with that. And then Mr. Di Stefano took a summer school that was primarily around two hundred students, uh, and served over nine hundred and fifty students at no cost to any family in our community. Transportation was added, which has never been provided before. We were busing students throughout the summer. The amount of staff that were willing to work this summer to help students, um, it was just a tremendous effort. And I'll let them share the highlights, but I just want to personally thank you both, because it was just an outstanding undertaking.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Allenback. Um, I am the social studies department chair, and I was also the coordinator for the credit recovery program last spring. So, by December of two thousand and twenty, we knew our kids were in trouble. We had a lot of students who were struggling, and teachers were reporting a lot of no-shows online and apathy. And so, we really needed to do something to help these students, uh, be successful by the end of the year. Anybody, if we could help anybody, we could, we wanted to do that. So, there was conversation by the administration, um, in the fall or in December, and then there was a whole school meeting in January, kind of presenting this, this hurdle that we have to face. So, the purpose of this was, um, basically to, uh, provide as many ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders, the opportunity to earn credit i- in their classes, particularly their, only their full-year classes, um, for specific science, math, history, and their English courses. So, as you can see here, um, the meetings were held initially in January of two thousand and twenty-one. We continued to ask, uh, staff, if staff was interested in participating and kind of creating this program. We did have staff step up to do that, and, um, in March and April, they wrote the courses. And then, um, the students were identified by SRBI teams, by assist, uh, admin, uh, grade-level admin, uh, school counselors. In April, there was a massive campaign to get students to register, those who had been identified as potentially losing credit or possibly losing credit because of the poor performance in the first semester. And then, through May and June of, um, two thousand and twenty-one, we implemented the program. It's really amazing to think of how much we did in a very, very short amount of time. So, there were definitely some pitfalls, but, um, it was overall very, very successful. So, the staff, staffing made up, was made up some, somewhat like this. We had people volunteer to write the courses, and, um, some people volunteered to tutor, and in some cases, they did both. So, the courses were all delivered on Canvas, so that meant that they had to be written and put onto our, our learning management system in a way that was, um, easy for the kids to self-navigate. So, that took quite a, a amount of time. So, the staff who wrote the modules took about eight hours or so to do that, put all of that together. Um, and then we had a student, uh, staff, once the program started, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, but we had twenty-four staff members. And this included, um, paras who stepped up to be staff, to, to tutor, um, substitutes, uh, who stepped up to, and then regular staff. And, um, they all wanted to be a part of this program. So, uh, I'll talk a little more about their expectations, but essentially, they were expected to provide five hours of their time to this, you know, and, and for this program. And then I, I was kind of overseeing all of that, um, and I kind of monitored, uh, the registration, coordinated all of that, reached out to tutors when I needed to, et cetera. And then the grade-level administrators and counselors were, um, after they did their intense outreach, they were able to access, uh, comments by both me and by the tutors to see how the kids were, how the kids were doing. So, um, I do want to note that, um, KSA also offered the same, um, program. They used the modules that were developed by the teachers at Sutherland High School. So, we shared those over through Canvas, and they had their own system of delivering that material. They had a system that I think might have been a little better for us, um, which was a standard time that kids were logging on and meeting with kids, uh, meeting with their tutors. Based on the teachers' willingness to, um, author courses, we were able to offer, um, a recovery course in Algebra One, Earth Science, Biology, Foundations of Algebra, English One, English Two, English Three, Modern U.S. History, and World History. So, mostly, uh, freshman and sophomore courses, but a couple of junior courses as well. Each of those courses focused on four to five skills, uh, with a range of sixteen to twenty different lessons, um, that they had to go through. And the students were certainly, were encouraged to do this on their own. So, this was quite an undertaking, because you're talking about asking kids who weren't doing anything on their own to begin with, uh, to continue to do stuff on their own. And, uh, so, we had a, an interesting outcome. So, the tutors were expected to, um, you know, basically reteach if a kid needed to, not, if they didn't understand something, to set individual goals with the, with the student, clarify assignments, provide feedback, and even lightly correct. We did not ask tutors to, you know, be really intense with it, but because we have such amazing staff, they did, and they were really intense. The kids that showed up for them got, benefited a lot. So, the tutor was also supposed to provide up to five hours a week of support. Live, weekly, uh, office hours were also part of that five hours, um, and we managed to make it so that if there, there were multiple tutors for same courses, there were tutors at different times, and so we posted on Canvas when tutors were available, and they could actually, um, log in and talk to any tutor. I assigned each kid a tutor just for ease of, um, communication, but they could log in at any time, um, that these hours were open, and they could talk to a teacher. Uh, talk, yeah, talk to a teacher. Um, each tutor also completed a weekly update for each student that they were assigned, and roughly, everybody had four to seven students, um, that they were directly responsible for. Um, and once a student successfully completed a course, the tutor then arranged for the grade change to happen, um, in, uh, in Power School. So, some of the highlights, um, of this particular program, uh, we had over a hundred kids register, um, after a really intense targeted encouragement. I will tell you that they definitely, there were some that, um, I think the parents were registering them, not the kids were registering themselves. So, there were some where you had kids that, like, they, they registered for four classes, and we, we knew that was impossible, but you can't tell the parent that. So, um, you know, we, we wanted to encourage that. Um, so, we had over a hundred kids register. Thirty-four of those hundred and seven did finish the credit recovery course successfully. And that ma- means that they met, um, the requirements to demonstrate learning in that first semester. What they would receive as a result of this is a sixty, which was our, our lowest passing grade. So, we would put in the sixty for the semester one, and then all they had to do was keep up with things in the second semester. Unfortunately, ten of them did not, so twenty-four of those thirty-four continued, um, to do well in their, in the class second semester, which we think is a great, a great victory, because we basically just took twenty-four kids and, sorry, but we took them out of summer school, and we allowed them to, you know, earn credit and move on with their classes if they needed to. So, we felt that that was a really big, um, success. At the beginning, our goal was to basically, if we could help even just one student get back on track, we would know we were successful. So, to have, you know, thirty-four, you know, actually do well, but twenty-four actually get credit, I think we did a great job. Uh, some other data related to that, so ten of those who passed the credit recovery course, unfortunately, like I said, could not maintain that passing average. And we knew that was going to be a hurdle, because again, we're asking kids to do more on top of what they already didn't want to do. So, we knew that would be a hurdle, and thankfully, my, the tutors were so great. They constantly were reaching out, constantly trying to email. Some even called parents. They were not expected to do any of that. And, uh, every week, they would report back as to whether, you know, kids would, what, what happened. Most of the times, it was just kids just kind of logged on and then just sort of logged off. They just didn't really take advantage of it, but, oh, well. Um, a quick count of, uh, the tutor feedback, or looking at that tutor feedback, um, suggested that forty-four of the unsuccessful students did not, um, uh, did not attempt to do anything. So, I mean, we just couldn't, we tried really hard for about five weeks, trying to get these kids to, to log on and do things, and they just, they just didn't do that. So, again, the counselors and the administrators had access to these, uh, forms that the tutors were filling out, so they could see these weekly comments. So, they could also reach out to parents if they needed to. So, some conclusions, um, to this program. Given the time and the conditions under which the program evolved, it should be considered a success. It has really good structure, really good bones, um, to support students in the future, should they need credit recovery. We have all of these courses already made. Um, and again, they, they have labs in them, videos in them, project, you know, things to do in them. I mean, it was, it was what the teachers considered to be the bare minimum that the kids needed to do to reflect learning. And I'd like to say that there's, it's a very diverse type of lessons, different lessons that are available to the kids, so it was, it was really good. It would also serve as a basis for students who might need additional help, um, or the opportunity to demonstrate additional learning, um, throughout the year. So, if we're having kids struggle before the end of the quarter, um, they, we might be able to extract some of these lessons and have them show that, that, you know, the assessment piece of that. And that's it. So, thank you.
Heather, um, I, I can't personally, and I'm sure the other boards have members have, excuse me, something to say. How wonderful that, um, we are able to do this at Sutherland High School.
Yeah.
We have a wonderful school system anyways, but to do this, to help these kids, um, and, and reaching out and doing what this program did, to me, is just wonderful, because it was such a terrible year and a half.
It was.
For the kids. I mean, you, I'm sure the parents wanted to sign them up.
They did.
For everything, and the success rate. But I am so very, very proud of what you and the tutors and the parents did, and what we were able to offer. How wonderful for these kids. And let's hope that it continues and that they take advantage of it, because what more could you ask for?
The technology was a huge piece of this, you know, having kids being able to log on, um, and have Google meets, and, uh, then to do the work on their own, working through Canvas. Um, I think that was a huge part of the success. I don't know if we would have had as much if there was as much physical movement to the building and, you know, that kind of a thing. So, um, yeah, it was, it was a success, and I, again, I can't thank the tutors enough, because they were just really on top of things. And, and while they were compensated, it was still extra time that they had to devote, and, um, you know, that takes time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
I, I'm curious. I don't know if you're the one to ask, but, and I know this is not just Sutherland, it's lots of places. Did we have a higher number of, a much higher number of people who didn't graduate last year than in previous years? Do we know that?
Well, actually, Mr., as Mr. Di Stefano gives his presentation, th- this was the, the first reach and grab. Right. As we approached, uh, in, in the middle of that first quarter, uh, thinking and seeing how many students potentially were going to fail for the year.
Right.
That's how we, we drilled down to that initial number of, of one oh seven, to say, if we don't catch these kids now, they have no chance the second half of the year.
Right.
As you saw from the data, there were, there were successes, and there were also some kids that, no matter how much we reached out, and as teachers, what, what do we do? We constantly try to engage and motivate. So, Heather wasn't exaggerating, where it was a constant outreach for those first five weeks to say, "Come on, come on, come on, meet with me, meet with me. We've got to do this, got to do..." Some were successful. The ones that weren't, Mr. Di Stefano will talk to, because we still had, we had the, the summer to, to try to bring those students up to par. We knew we wanted to offer this for as many as we could, and, and again, it's, it's, it's almost an understatement when you, when you consider that these were kids that were completely disengaged. And then to ask them to keep up with what you're doing, or what you should be doing now, and on top of it, do this extra work in order to regain that credit, i- it's a testament, one, to the teamwork of the staff, but also the, the collaboration with the families and, and the kids stepping up.
And I think we, we targeted, I, I mean, we targeted as many people as we could in nine, ten, and eleven, but I think this is really going to be helpful for nine and ten graders who are still learning about the credit system and what this means, and why homework is important. You know, they kind of, a lot of them were flubbering around, because they didn't quite understand moving from eighth grade to ninth grade, that, that big transition. So, this, I think, was very helpful for those kids as well.
I have a second question. I noticed there wasn't, and I know the course has a different name, Civics wasn't up there?
So, no. So, um, Citizenship in Action. We did not have a, um, volunteer to write that.
I was going to ask, was it the teacher issue, or was it the not?
Yeah, it was a writer issue. We didn't have anybody.
Because that's a required course.
It is a required course, but, um, you know, again, we, we tried, we, we tried, but we didn't really have a lot that were, that didn't earn that credit this year. I think it was a small handful.
And that's a junior course. The most of yours are ninth and tenth grade students.
Uh, there was a couple of eleventh grade. There was, um, the English Three was the big one, because they need the four credits for English. So, you got to really keep them on track on that one. Citizenship, you could make up even your senior year if you needed to. So, there was a little wiggle, and we weren't too concerned about that. But the English, definitely, we wanted to make sure, and the algebra.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
So, I just wanted to, I guess, you sort of mentioned it, but I, I guess it's just so important. So, all of these tutoring, all the coursework, it was on top of what teachers' expectations were already expected to do.
Yes.
And, you know, again, like, uh, that just is dynamite. It makes me proud. It's exactly, you know, the type of parent I am in a, in this community, the reason that we're here, is going above and beyond, and that's just like...
Yeah, and what I was really excited too was if the parents had stepped up. I mean, we threw out a big invite to anybody on staff, and for some of these, even the parents to step up and say, "Oh, I want to help with it." I thought that was really great, you know what I mean? Because they got to embrace a situation or a, a role that they may not necessarily always have, you know, during the day. So, that was really wonderful too. But, yeah, the staff was, um, wonderful.
I guess my, my only other question that I'd have, though, so in, in an effort to try and, like, maybe get more s- success stories out of it, is there any potential to, I, I know we were trying to engage parents, but almost like engage parents to, like, "Learn with your student," kind of thing, and sort of like, again, like, "Ah," you know, "All right, I'll just do it. Leave me alone." Like, "You don't have to be on this with me," type thing.
Yeah.
You know, I, again, like, just...
Wait till your kids are teenagers.
Yeah, I wonder what that is sometimes.
Well, then, I must have been a very different teenager, because, so, so I just want to say, like, this, the whole, like, changing of the credit and stuff, if I didn't get at least a four-point-oh, my mom probably would have, uh, she would have got me with the wooden spoon. So, you know, again, she was, "Why'd you get a ninety-eight on that test? You didn't have extra credit?" It's like, "No, ma, it's a, it's a big course."
Having a junior in high school and a senior in high school myself, they get annoyed when I only make a suggestion of what they might want. Having a junior in high school and a senior in high school myself, they get annoyed when I only make a suggestion of what they might want to do.
I love it.
Yeah, so I don't know if they want me sitting next to them.
I can't wait, I can't wait.
Hey, Heather, I just wanted to make one quick comment, and I just, it's just, uh, everything, they said, one, he said, "If," in the slide, I forgot which slide it was, he said, "If you only got one," that is like such a great statement, because that shows the heart of the teachers, shows the heart of the intent. Or, I mean, and some people could flip it around and goes, "You know how many thousands of kids we have at the high school, why didn't you go for more?" But your goal was, if we can have one success, and you got more than your one, and I, and I just love that. I just think that statement speaks volumes for all the...
I'd have to give credit to Mr. Pepe, because he's the one that said it, um, at a certain point, but it was kind of like...
No, no, don't worry about that, it's great, Heather, it's great, very job.
I'm going to give it to him, but it was our, it was our guiding light, you know what I mean, like, that was our, our beacon. Twenty-four is much larger. Mr. Pepe, they give you a lot of stuff up here too, huh?
Not we, it's Mrs. Carmody.
That's all right, Mrs. Carmody, our our faculty meetings were kind of like that too, and our sit meetings, yeah. Oh, we do.
Can I take one more comment here?
Sure.
So, this is, I mean, this is great, yeah, just echo what everybody, I I agree with what everybody said here, but, um, I know this might be a little premature, but are there any plans to continue this in, you know, in the future or in coming years?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
That's, that's something that will have require money, so that'll come from...
One of the, one of the benefits of having the modules written is that we we can absolutely access them and reuse. So, um, it it is, that was one, as we talked to the staff, um, one of the selling features, I I would say, that it wasn't just a one and done. It has potential to continue.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Mr. DiStefano.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
Ms. Allenback and I worked on our presentation separately, so when I saw her flow charts, I got real jealous.
I'm sorry.
I have to work, I'll have to work on my flow charts and illustrations.
Heather's always been like that, though.
So I'll have to rethink how I do this. So normally with summer school... What's that? Oh, that's, that's, that's hers, this is me here. I don't have pencils and flow charts, I just have data. So normally I kick off my summer school work back in January. So January, February comes around, and I'm in the dark, I'm like, I don't know what we're really doing this summer, because last summer we were really providing a program for online kids. So when we received word, we were getting funds to do something, it was mid-March, I think, we had the green light, to run a program where it was going to be at first, um, a program that was going to be K through twelve, but not yet known if it was going to be in person or if it was going to be virtual. So we, um, got together as a team, the coordinators, the district, uh, and curriculum coordinators throughout March, and then eventually in April. And then our our saving grace was like, all right, let's do this full person, everybody meets with a teacher, nothing online. Only the event, like, if somebody had to self-quarantine, but to our fortunate, no one had to self-quarantine, no one had COVID, so everybody was full person. So that was a big bonus, and to have kids back in the classroom was a win. So moving forward, the the con- the the real challenge was to merge these two programs, of the Summer Academy, which was for primarily remediation for math skills and reading skills, with a program that we've had before with enrichment. So we wanted to still have that component where there was opportunities for students to be engaged in creativity, higher-order thinking, and as well as designing and exploring with a program that was going to develop their skills for academics and reading, writing, and math. So we, um, we kicked off the Summer Academy first, and then eventually brought into the enrichment program that kind of followed it. And then merging the two was a, was a trick of its own, but we had to establish the staff. So we kicked off, uh, a search for staff, and we ended up getting, for elementary, I think, about forty-five to fifty staff members to come forward. And I was worried we were going to only get about twenty, so we thankfully got enough staff to eventually come forward and eventually work with the school system so that they had something. So these are many of the highlights here, and I'll probably speak to them as I move throughout the slideshow. But again, we we did provide a program in person, we had utilized schools that had air conditioning, so we basically took over DePaul Elementary School, we utilized JFK, and eventually the high school. Uh, we normally have our program at Hattan during the school year or the summer, but it didn't necessarily have the accommodations for the number of kids, one, that we had, and as well as, two, the air conditioning that we needed. And with that, we figured, uh, we probably shouldn't run Camp Invention this year, given the fact that our program for Camp Invention usually houses about thirty to thirty-five kids in a particular room, and we usually use Strong as our school. And back in March, we're like, we don't, we don't think that's a good idea, so we had to push on with Camp Invention. But JFK, DePaul, it worked out really well. In fact, we only, there was only six rooms, I think, we didn't use at DePaul, so we needed just about every room, including some of the side rooms for some of the staff members to work one-on-one with students. Um, as mentioned, we, yeah, we offered transportation, and we, this was the winning card, because this was the opportunity for parents to get their kids to the school. Although many of them did opt to drive their child in, but the transportation was localized, it was at, uh, areas around town. I think we ended up using about twelve buses in total, two for the middle school and ten for the elementary school. And the locations were at parishes, they were at school parking lots, they were at the YMCA, Sloper, Fast Camp, so throughout town. And many of the, uh, parents did take up on that offer. Uh, another great aspect of the program was having high school volunteers to come into the school, the elementary school, the academy, and work with the teachers. So that was a a big win, because they were al- allowed to bring kids to bathroom breaks, and eventually to transition between session A and session B, to help assist with the distribution of materials, to help one-on-one with a student who was struggling, to kind of go over some of the material for kids that may have missed a day. So having them in the program was an absolute, um, benefit to our, to ours kids. So Steve did mention nine hundred and fifty. Uh, it's felt like nine hundred and fifty, I'll tell you that, but it really was six hundred and fifty. Um, three hundred and fifty or so were the middle school or the elementary school students that were at DePaul. Um, and the rest of them were at JFK and at the high school. So with for the courses that we offered, we had eventually a hundred and twelve high school students enroll at the start. We had so many students that we were able to offer many of the courses, in fact, we brought in chemistry, we brought in citizenship in action for the first year. So we were able to offer more courses and over more sessions, so that allowed a student to choose certain sessions where they wanted to do session one course or session two course, so they had more offers and options. And of the credits we gave back, we gave back a hundred and seventy-nine high school credits to eventually a hundred and five students, so that shows also that some students were able to recover not just one credit, but possibly two or even three credits in total. Um, one thing to mention is that, and we kind of alluded to it, that in Heather's presentation, we, there was a greater need for the freshmen and sophomores, they need twenty-five credits to graduate versus the juniors. Well, then, the juniors and seniors that only needed twenty-two credits, so the three credits is a big difference. So we needed to capture those students that were really struggling, that may have only earned one or two credits their freshman year or their sophomore year. So this is a need, this is definitely a need, the, and the red flags were back in December, when we were looking at the data and were like, there's so many kids that need to capture credit. Uh, the session dates, there's some overlap, um, we were tied to the buses, so we had to ensure that we started programs for the middle school and the elementary academy, which were running buses, so they were arriving at the schools at nine o'clock. We had a a transition at ten thirty, then it concluded at noon. For the high school program, you see at the top there, we had the three sessions, each of them two hours for eighteen days, and we had an extra hour session. No, it wasn't a session where like, "Hey, come on in if you want, uh, they'd love to spend another hour," it was actually for students that, uh, don't normally meet the eligibility, which is a certain grade score, so for students that fell below that eligibility, we offered this extra hour session, and I think there were about eight students in total that came for the extra hour session, in which it's like, all right, you look, you didn't meet the eligibility, but we needed to come in for that extra hour from two o'clock to three o'clock, spend some time with the teachers to go over, for the most part, semester one material, because those were the students that, uh, perhaps didn't do quite as well with the semester recovery with Heather's program, and then spent another hour at our program from two to three o'clock, and it worked out with their schedule. Again, like I said, there were so many courses offered, that for the most part, I think all eight of those students had a class session three that matched or paired with the extra hour that they needed, so those students were there from twelve o'clock to three o'clock if they needed it to be. And of course, we had our high school enrichment still, so we had great classes for the high school enrichment kids. We did offer two new courses, I th- maybe it was three, but, um, we had, uh, an Arabic and a Hindi course offerings for the summer school students, but, um, they didn't get the enrollment to run. The number of students, uh, I have it compared to two thousand and nineteen, because that was the last year we were in person. So the data you can see, we have, uh, across the board, K through five, a greater number of kids, and it's basically even distributed. And if I can go back to when this all started, we threw a net out there back in March, or maybe it was April, we sent an email out to parents who, um, perhaps could have benefited from our program. Uh, I think we initially identified over six hundred kids with the help of elementary school teachers that needed some form of remediation, whether it was math or language arts. And we got eight hundred, three hundred and eighty-five to initially register, which was, I think, uh, way more than I expected. Uh, Steve thought we were going to nail three hundred and twenty on the dot, which I was like, "Are are you sure?" So we got it, we got three hundred and fifty, basically, so, um, give them credit for identifying how many kids we could get. But you can see it's basically even distributed throughout the grade levels, there's probably a little bubble in the grade two there. At the end of the program, I gave, uh, a survey to parents, as I normally do, about the offerings and the course and the program that we had. One of the questions was, well, overall, how would you rate the, our summer school program, the summer academy program? So at that point, it captured a hundred and thirteen responses, and the five was, uh, exceeds expectations, and the one was below expectation. I don't know if that one parent had a bad day or not, but you could see that clearly a majority of the parents, uh, felt that the the academy program was of great value. Our middle school remediation and enrichment together, and again, you can see that the greater numbers for the middle school program, like the elementary program, we threw out a net, and we captured a bunch of students right away, parents enrolled their child. Some of them did back out last minute, just because there were only two buses that were running for the middle school program, not the ten, and they were running different routes. So we lost a lot of the middle school parent interest, just because of the buses that weren't going to specialized locations. But in all, we still had a greater number of students that showed up for the remediation. For the high school credit recovery, uh, this is all the courses that we offered, you can see chemistry and citizenship are new. The number of students enrolled, and again, I compared this one to last year, because we did offer these courses last year, although via, they were through the Google meets. So last year was online for high school credit recovery, this year was all in person. The number enrolled is the number of student sessions enrolled, to be clear, so the two fourteen you see is the student sessions. So again, there were about a hundred and five students, so m- some of them were taking multiple courses. And as Heather alluded to earlier, she said the junior English, she said there was a greater need for junior English. You can see that number is up there, twenty-nine. This is by grade level, and again, the concern then was the grade nine, ten students. So we have the number of students here, thirty-eight, thirty-four. The question earlier was, well, did, how did our graduates do? So, well, they needed twenty-two credits, we had seven seniors. There were two seniors that I believe needed summer school credit to graduate and did not even register. So that we, we tried, we called, we said, "We got to get you in," school councils were there the first week of the program, "Come in, come in, come in, you need to be here," and they just did not register. I think the whole in-person program was not what they wanted, they wanted to do it online. High school enrichment, again, the numbers are a little bit lower than past. We'll get it up. This is, I'm, uh, numbers are so large. Um, at the bottom of the years, two thousand, these, this is basically a review of the last ten years of the program. So again, last year, we didn't have as many programs, the green is elementary enrichment or academy, so there was no elementary program last year. The red is middle school, so the middle school enrollment last year was per- a little bit lower. The high school enrollment here in the solid blue, and then the, this, uh, somewhat blue is the high school enrichment, that's last year. But you could see the jumps for this year, and again, in a program where transportation was offered, tuition was covered, you could see the need for it. Normally, the Southington Community Services does kind of put forward some funds for students or families in need, um, but everybody was free of charge for the most part, for the exception of the high school enrichment. Um, the numbers pretty much were much greater than last year. But my favorite one is this one here, which shows you the need for enrichment. Most of those in the far right for this past year were elementary school students that wanted to be there for enrichment. Uh, so again, that's a testament of that this, this district, this town, really has a place for enrichment, that kids want to be in a system where they're truly engaged in activities, where it's exploring, discovering, learning new things, and just being part of a program that's fun. So looking ahead, being that there appears to be a need for a program, um, I'm hoping that in the future, there's some form of continued financial assistance. Um, in the past, when there hasn't been, it's been tough to enroll students, especially in, uh, situations where finances are not as, uh, proficient for families. But there's definitely a need for certain programs for kids across the district, K through twelve. And if we can somehow create a program or a financial assistance plan, or if there is some fund system that will allow students to attend a program that they otherwise could not do to finances, I think that's something that we can look into somehow, or at least find opportunities. Uh, continue to advertise programs, K through twelve, partner with the high school clubs and National Honor Society. Again, those thirty students that volunteered, I've, I've already written like three or four of them letters, and like, they have done a superb job. Some of them I bel- truly believe need to be teachers. I I cornered three of them and said, "If you don't become a teacher, I want to know what you become, because I want to work for you potentially, because they're phenomenal." Um, then need to stagger those start times, it was tough for some parents who had kids in elementary and middle school to be in two places at the same time. I know the buses did arrive at nine, but, um, I would say that we have to somehow stagger it a little bit for families to arrive at different schools. And all was a great program, we had a lot of positive feedback, we had seventy-five staff members, we had a handful of special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, it was a really cohesive group, it was the best part program I've been a part of. Um, fun to be at DePaul and with those teachers. Um, the high school teachers did a great job of working with kids that had not been in the classroom for like a year and a half to a year. So to get those kids in every day and to work with them, and to really kind of help them transition back into this year, I think was a, it was, um, one of the things that I looked back at as saying that this is, this is working, we need to be in person, we need good programs for kids.
Great job.
Thank you both.
Now, how many years you've, thank you all, all very kind. How many years have you been doing this?
This is ten.
Well, you get better every year.
It's best, and I know, I sometimes like, how do I get?
Really, wonderful.
Oh, wow, really, like...
No pressure, no pressure.
I mean, this is like, how, how, like, when I was like, two years ago, I'm like, this is it, this is not going to get any better, so.
It is.
Um, but...
That's wonderful.
So I, I just had a quick question, so, um, now with, sort of seeing the numbers tick up, especially after, you know, being online and everything else, um, eh, what are we sort of planning, have we created any sort of forecast of what we may have to s- look forward to, like, a year from now, two years from now, and, you know?
Heather may know more than I do, because she attends the sit meetings during the school year, but I'll tell you personally, I still find that kids are struggling to find their place.
Right.
I've, I have five different classes, and I see the gamut, I see kids that have kind of bounced back in our, in a routine of like getting work done and doing the things that they need to do, but I also see a group of kids that need, they need social, emotional support, they need like the parent figure, they need, um, a s- a system in place where they can work together with other friends again, and be, like, the, just like literally in a good emotional place. Uh, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Pepe a few weeks ago about, you know, some of the classes that I have. I have a class that, you know, they're right now, like academically, they're not quite there. But right now, I need to show them that I am there for them, whether I'm the teacher, whether I'm their parent, their parent figure, their role model. They need support, they need support emotionally, they, they just need to be in a good place. They can't learn if they're not in a good place, so, um, I think kids in general are are struggling to find themselves academically. Uh, that will come around as long... Uh, that will come around as long as we provide these emotional supports. So in my mind, I think if I were to take a snapshot of, you know, what the grades are probably are, I'd say we have some work to do.
Yeah.
But we have to somehow find that balance of, well, how much do we push them versus how much do we support them? Academically and physically and emotionally and so forth. So, not physically, but emotionally, how much do we push them? Push them. I might get in trouble.
So I, you know, we've had, this question has been asked, um, extensively in the spring from the Board of Finance and Town Council. What are you doing with the funds? What are you gonna be doing with the funds? You guys know, all know the cost of daily transportation is not cheap. We have a bus contract, a transportation contract to the cost of the staff, um, you know, and all of the services that we offered. Nursing, you know, support that needs to be there, office and clerical support. I mean, when you have that many students, it's larger than most of our elementary schools, about the size of one of our middle schools that's being run in the summertime. Um, even, I mean, to the finest details where David worked out getting the elementary desks moved up to the middle school so the kids were sitting in seats that fit them in the conditioned space. I mean, no stones left unturned. So, yeah, i- it was free. And I, it's interesting to me because I, I, when I first got here, I said, you know, there's often a correlation, unfortunately, uh, with socioeconomic status. Sometimes that kids that may be considered at risk with the supports that we need. And people always said, well, if you don't charge them, they'll have no investment in it and then they won't come. I think this blows that theory out of the water. Uh, we didn't charge them and they came. And so, you know, maybe not everyone, right, as we talked about, but, uh, you know, offering that support. So I do think we need to get creative with revenue streams to figure out to, how to sustain this beyond the, uh, COVID relief money that was here. That money was put back into supports for kids. It's not, it's not anywhere flowing out there. It's been targeted to programming. Um, and we'll talk more about, I know you've heard about that, but it, with me, about the emotional behavioral needs of kids and kind of monitoring that and what we can do to support that as well. So thank you both again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you again very much. Thank you. Uh, moving right along, next on our agenda is the, um, superintendent's proposed, uh, goals for twenty-one, twenty-two, which we all had a chance to read, which are very well done. Mr. Medanski, your first try at this.
Hope of coming to fruition, maybe, um, a lot of effort that you're gonna be putting out, which may not come to pass.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, to, you know, the, uh, three C, for instance, uh, develop an educational specification and review academic programming, anticipating bringing the Karen, Karen Smith Academy forward for consideration in the November tw- uh, twenty-twenty-two referendum. Um, I, I think we've got a lot of other things that we're, we're looking hopefully, you know, like the elementary schools. Okay, they've been, they've been, they've been in, in the works since I've been on the board. Everybody knows how long I've been on the board. And we've got some schools that are in dire need. Not that the, you know, the Karen Smith Academy doesn't need it, but I'm not sure that would be something that, you know, your efforts should be put into place. Maybe it should be a board goal.
Yeah.
You know, uh, for the plant, for planning purposes. But I think we need to, as a board, is gonna need to prioritize what steps we want to take to bring to the town. Because to do them all at one time, I can tell you, it's not gonna happen.
So I, the good news is, you know, the way the policy reads, we have a mid-year discussion of these goals. And so if there are things that are not progressing by mid-year, maybe we revisit that and say, is that something that could push it out to twenty-two, twenty-three goals? You know, I would, I would entertain that. The only reason why I included that was because of the, the entire Deronowski project and the, and, um, the potential for what would happen to the current Deronowski Elementary School versus building a new school behind it. And then what does the site plan look like that would allow for future use or home of Karen Smith Academy with just something as simple as a test fit and developing Ed specs, you know? Um, I have had conversations with the town manager about that. Uh, we did present this to the town council last May about, you know, a need for that facility as well to be reviewed. Um, and so, you know, I, I definitely see what you're saying. And I, I actually looked at it and thought about it and waited and I was like, it's, it's, you know, in my conversations with the town manager, it should be included as part of the project, given that it's the scope of involvement with the Deronowski property, if it's gonna stay there. That's something the board would eventually vote on and decide and determine. I think the elementary project committee, which is you guys, the board member, really should steer that. Um, my job is really to facilitate and make sure we stay on track with it and communicate and engage with the family and the town officials.
Well, like I said, I, you know, to, to, um.
So what happens if you remove it and I accomplish it?
Well, what happens if you put it on here and it doesn't get accomplished, you know, during evaluation process?
So, so the way, from what I see, and I can actually see it happening now, the way my evaluation works from the policy is that I get commendations and recommendations. And, and maybe a recommendation would be is you need to revisit that in twenty-two, twenty-three, you didn't make it. Now, if you're telling me, Steve, play it safe and eliminate it because you might shoot yourself in the foot, I respect that and admire that. Uh, but my commitment is to try and do everything on this list. I've been told I'm a little crazy. Um, sometimes I like to prove it.
Crazy koala.
Well, you know, I'm just looking forward. And I know you have some dialogue with the, uh, town manager.
Which is a big part of my goals here too, is, you know.
Right. And, and, you know, I think that's great, but to, uh, I don't know, I like to see a goal that's, that's tangible. It, it can be evaluated for not only its content, but its success.
Yep.
And to have a goal that is so far-reaching that I feel it'd be, if, if you accomplish it, that's great. But if not, then what?
Yeah.
That's all.
That's fair, very fair.
So we, we had a motion and a second on the goals. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that is correct.
And Mr. Deronowski's discussion. Anyone else have any discussion on Mr. Uh, Medanski's goals?
I just love how, like, gung ho you are. Like, it's, it's, it's awesome.
That's why.
What's that?
He's young.
He's young. Well, again, like, uh, it's, it's, it's awesome, Steve. You know, thank, thank you very much. And, you know, again, like, from a board member's perspective, but then as a dad of two kids in Suddington, like, it's, it's awesome to have big goals. And, you know, I, I, I hope we, we're checking them off as we go.
There's, there's a lot of mention in here beyond just the district right now. It's the community, the partnerships, the engagement, uh, the town, you know, officials. So, you know, I, Mr. Shoda and I have even talked about me attending town council meetings and he had coming to attend your board meetings. So we continue to start to, to foster that partnership and build that bridge. Um, I'm more than willing to show these goals to the town council and explain to them what, uh, you know, my motivations are too, so that, you know, we can all be on the same page. I often hear from them, like, why don't we know what you're doing? Um, it's not a secret. This is a public document, but I think sometimes, you know, people are busy. They're running their meetings in their odd-in evenings as well. It'd, for me to provide them some time and answer their questions is, is, you know, acceptable as well. And the most important thing I would say in these goals, um, you know, with, with the position that I have, I have the ability to influence and prioritize, but we all know it takes a team. It's not gonna be me. Um, and I really meant what I said in that final paragraph. We have a super talented team of administrators here and central office staff. My job is to help create conditions and motivate and supervise and hold people accountable where necessary and prioritize so that we can accomplish much of what's here. You know, it's not necessarily doing the work. It's maybe more about leading the work. And, uh, I'm very thankful for be d- doing it with the team I have. So, thank you.
Just a quick comment that I love, number four, especially C, the one about the students' social, emotional, et cetera, their health. And, um, that's huge. I think that's gonna be our, I, I know there's the technical angle, what we do with the buildings and all the other things.
Yeah, yeah.
And budgets. But as far as caring about kids and how they're doing, that's extremely important. So thank you for putting that there.
We will at a future board meeting have a pretty comprehensive, uh, presentation for you about a lot of the efforts going on across the schools. Um, information and data sources we have where there are concerns and then, you know, some, some plans and strategies we have to address them uh, with not just district staff, but with community staff.
Any other, uh, discussion on his goals? So they have been, uh.
Seconded.
Seconded, yep, yep, yep.
And now I have to say, is everyone in favor?
To which we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed?
You're opposed, Dave, okay. Um, moving on, next we have the rat- uh, ratification, Mr. Brown.
I recommend approving the tentative agreement between the Suddings Education Association, um, and the Suddington Board of Education.
Second.
Put the dates, please. Put the dates in.
Uh, the dates, let's say July first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Questions? All of, we had a second on that?
Yep.
Yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last, Mrs. Clark.
Oh.
Acceptance.
Sorry. Move to accept the gift of a park bench in the playground area of Deronowski Elementary School.
I can provide a little background if you like.
Sure.
Um, we were approached by a, a, a parent who's a kindergartner, uh, a parent of a kindergartner at Deronowski Elementary School. Um, the bench is from the Kindness for Kate nonprofit organization. Uh, it's heavy gage steel with a durable coating and comes in a variety of color. The phrase "Kind Acts Touch Everyone" is outlined in the back of the bench. Um, the bench has a s- a special and significant meaning to our family. Three years ago, we lost our daughter Kate at birth. Uh, this would be the third bench donated in her name. The others are currently located at Rainbow Playground in Panthorn Park and at Norton School in Cheshire.
Oh, lovely.
So I will send out, if the board approves, I will send out a thank you, uh, on behalf of the board.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no, I'd say it.
Mr. Roschana.
Mr. Roschana? No, Mr., geez. Deronowski.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Go with it, Terry. Hey.
We're okay.
Mr. Deronowski. Made your motion.
Yes.
Yep.
Second.
We have a second?
Yep. I thirded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.